Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everybody to this regular meeting of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Reverend Jimmy McMillan of Baptist Tabernacle, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
We thank you dear God for loving and caring for us. Lord, we thank you for your blessings of life. And Father, I just want to thank you and praise you for loving us dear God. Lord, how that you love us and care for us. Now, Lord, we come before you here today, and Father, we ask your help and we ask for your touch. Lord, we thank you for our leaders, we thank you for the blessings of life of them. And Father, I pray here today that you have given wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. And Lord, we know that they have to make hard and tough decisions. And Father, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your help. And Lord, I just pray that you'll touch and work in a mighty way here today. We ask for your blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend McMillan. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on January 25th. I would entertain a motion.
Would approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have two advertised public hearings tonight, and we will begin first with a public hearing to receive comments on a request to annex and zone property located on New Airport Road. Ms. Kelsey?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, the public hearing has been properly advertised at this time. We would like your comments.
Okay. I will first ask our city planner, Mark Costle, if he will come forward and just remind the council of the particulars of this request, and then I will see if anyone wishes to speak to it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. In mid-November, an individual submitted a rezoning and annexation application for a parcel located in the 200 block of New Airport Road. That application was reviewed, it was presented to our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals on December the 13th. They unanimously recommended that the mayor and council move forward with the proposed action. We called for a public hearing related to this matter on January the 11th, and as Ms. Kelsey said, the advertisements were properly conducted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Costle.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak in favor of this annexation and rezoning request? Okay. Seeing none, is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak against this annexation and rezoning request? Okay. Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to our second public hearing to receive comments on a request to rezone property located in the 1400 block of Vernon Street. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The public hearing was properly advertised, and this time we would take any comments. We'd like Mr. Costle to come forward and give a brief report about the annexation of the rezoning request.
Mark, if you can just refresh the council on the nature of the request.
I'd be glad to, sir. This request was filed on November the 4th, it was taken to our planning board on December the 13th. The planning board's recommendation unanimously was that it move forward and be presented to council. We've had a couple different community open houses related to this to gauge community input. We've also had another meeting with the representatives of the Callaway Land Trust. The applicant, which is Alliance Residential Company, is proposing to develop 320 multifamily units on a parcel located in the 1400 block of Vernon Street.
Thank you, Mr. Costle. Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning request? If you will come to the podium and identify yourself for the benefit of the council.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. My name's Noah Randall. I'm the Managing Director of Development for Alliance Residential here in Georgia, and I'm speaking in support of this project. We're very excited to continue to move forward on this. We think we have a vision that for this project and for the residents and community here in La Grange that is worthy of your consideration, and is, you know, principally for us, we really care about placemaking and giving people good quality of life. And I think what we are proposing here is, does all of the above. We've welcomed the help of staff of your economic development arm and the community, and our intention is to continue to focus that as we find the revision for the project. And happy to share more on it, or just open it up for questions.
If you could share some specifics on the project, and then we'll see if the council has any questions.
Sure. So, I mentioned placemaking. Y'all are aware of the Public Shopping Center, Mr. Hoffman's developing right next to this. We're a big national developer, consistently kind of in the top three. But we really don't like saying that because, sorry, I'm not sure if all y'all can see this, because we approach each project individually. We think each project is unique, just like the communities that are in it, like the people that are going to live in it. Thanks, Chris. And so, I say that to say, Chris, who's actually our civil engineer on this, has done a great job, and what we really try to do is to make projects contextual with, you know, to not look at things in a vacuum, but to make it contextual. And here, we've got a site that really quickly slopes back, back here, we get kind of a gully. And what we've done there is, where you see these shades, these buildings kind of split away. And, you know, as a company, and Chris and I have done everything from high rises to something like this, and what we rarely have the opportunity to do is to take the community, have it some true privacy, you know, 100-plus feet off of the road, there's kind of a berm here, true privacy, have communal spaces, open spaces, you know, it seems like one in every two renters has a dog these days, and really bring people into the fold of this community, you know, being cognizant of the fact that, you know, there's everything from senior development here to, you know, pretty intensive use in a retail center, and then working away to single-family homes that, you know, and so we think that we've done a good job of transitioning from, you know, the intense use here, the hospital, and kind of feathering that into what ultimately, you know, the Callaway Trust plans to do with the rest, and to be cognizant of kind of all of those factors. But where we really do start, you know, this is the engineering stuff, working with TOPO, that's what Chris does, figures out how to really fill all the needs of our residents in terms of putting our amenities in a place that's accessible, and also, like I said, really buffering kind of around and putting this pocket here. But, so, you know, that's a two-dimensional site plan, but I like to start with that.
Talk about the architecture.
Yeah.
You know, it's... Sorry.
So, the project, it's three-story buildings, where you see those splits, that's a basement level. Again, working with the grade, you know, when you enter the project, it undulates, it falls away from you, and it's kind of richly vegetated. So, and then in terms of the architecture, we do have a pretty consistent building here across, once you get past the leasing office, other than the splits, of course. But what we, I really want to emphasize is, you know, the quality of the construction and also the quality of the units. So, you know, this city's done an incredible job of bringing in business, and we love when we can solve what we see as, when we see an opportunity and in some respects solve a problem. And you guys have a lot of people commuting a half an hour, 45 minutes. And so, the real objective here, and what attracted us to this place, is to put quality units, so this is stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, nine-foot ceilings, you know, it's not your apartment of old, right? And frankly, to also bring us, you know, we didn't, we didn't get to the point where we're developing more apartments than any other developer in the country by not building on a reputation of doing what we say we're going to do, doing it with partners, institutions, you know, the type of people that we work with on the investment side, you know, we're investing pension funds, right? We're investing life insurance companies, I mean, people that cannot build crap, excuse my language, right? And so, we have a really big focus on that. And the architecture is somewhat works from the inside out, but has to be, for us to continue to do business the way that we do, to continue to attract residents, the architecture has to be durable, has to look good for years to come. That's just, that's our program. Not every apartment developer is like that. That's not how, we've all seen 1980s apartments, wood siding flying off, or, you know, moldy vinyl plank, or vinyl siding on it. That's not what we're doing here. And beyond that, we have full control over that because we're also the builder. And so, we don't just build it, but we're putting warranties behind it. Chris puts warranties behind it, too, to make sure it works. So, that's the general gist of it. You know, full amenities, we, these projects are catered, I mentioned a lot about the jobs, they are catered toward a very diverse workforce here. So, my wife's a nurse, for instance, I'm a little biased, you know, but, you know, it's focused on providing the best experience for them. So, what we don't, what you won't see necessarily is a playground, something like that, we really focus on the demographic that's a stepping stone into homeownership. Like, we really like that aspirational homeowner. And, you know, just in the time that we've been working on this project, you know, the city has really endeared itself to us, and we're here to endear ourselves to you. But, you know, we really program it for that, like I said, diverse workforce, people that are, you know, y'all have companies that are hiring thousands of people, right? And so, in all different aspects. And so, it's no three bedrooms, it's just a mix of ones and twos. And again, programmed with all the things that they need, workout center, business center, and importantly, really tying into everything that Mr. Hoffman's done with his plans for the public. So, keeping that contextual, carrying that fence line across the front.
Quick question about that. So, what is the connectivity with the grocery store shopping center going to look like if you build this out? And I assume you have an arrangement with Mr. Hoffman on that, or?
Yeah, he's been phenomenal to work with. I think it's frankly, I think it's been more than we could ever expect from a neighbor with their own interests. So, the way that that works is this is a shared entry drive, however, this is a gate that is controlled access, right? So...
So, your apartments would be a gated community?
Yeah, so you can't drive a car in there, but we also, we don't run like a perimeter fence back in the woods. We do that kind of with natural barriers. But yeah, you, this is all controlled.
The vehicular access is gate-controlled?
Absolutely.
Not necessarily the...
Same as pedestrian access. The pedestrian residents would be able to walk.
To the shopping center, but it would be through a gate that is operated by the same card, if you will, that their vehicle would go through.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
But you would have a shared entry point with the shopping center, as well as your own separate entry point is what it looks like.
Yeah, so the way that we planned this and, you know, working with GDOT...
Well, that was going to be my next question, is what are you doing with GDOT? Because that's obviously a federally controlled highway.
Absolutely. So, you want to take it?
Sure.
Go ahead.
And I'm the civil engineer, but I have the...
What, can you just state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Chris Harrell with Summit Engineering Consultants. And I have, there has been a traffic study done, there have been traffic counts taken on Vernon Street. It is what you all know it to be. It's busy. The Georgia Department of Transportation does control the road, and we are working with them on exactly what they would like to see as far as traffic control, intersection control, and all those kinds of things.
I know you can't speak for them, but if you would share what sort of you would, any part of that conversation?
They are, they are, we've done an intersection control analysis, or intersection control evaluation, is what the transportation engineers would call it.
Just clarifying, it's something that your company did, not...
No, sir. A and R Engineering, who are transportation engineers, believe it or not, I'm a civil engineer, and I understand enough about this to maybe give you some information, but that is not my expertise. But I did speak with them, I have read their reports, I've talked with those guys. And the answer is, they do believe that full-controlled, but full-service intersections are appropriate at both the one across from Vernon Road. And then again, this is the upper Ganser common entrance here. Nobody knows yet whether or not any sort of signalization would be appropriate. However, there are lane widening's that will be required, there may be left turn lanes into our project that would get the traffic out of the flow of the traffic on Vernon Street. And so, DOT has yet to weigh in, according to A and R. However, you know, they do believe that we'll be widening the roads to some extent, and that we'll be putting in potentially some left turn lanes.
So, if I can orient myself on that map, the right side lines up with what we call Old Vernon Road.
Yes, sir. Old Vernon Road.
Going back to La Grange Academy.
Yes, sir.
And the other entrance lines up with the entrance to the hospital.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Where there's already an existing curb cut.
That's right.
That was stubbed out years ago.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are they talking about opening back up Old Vernon Road?
It already is.
It's open.
It's a public road that is...
No, I'm talking about where it dead ends.
No, sir. Not over here where it dead ends, no, sir.
Okay.
No.
Across from Farrell Street?
Yeah. I don't know what that remnants called now.
I'm not sure either. But no, sir. This Vernon Road, it's already a public road, will remain open.
I have a question.
And we're directly aligned with that. Yes, sir.
I have a question. First, I want to commend you for maintaining the integrity of Vernon by having such a wonderful area that you're building there. But my main concern is, do you all plan to hold on to this for 15 years and then sell it off?
That's a no question.
So, and not an uncommon question. It's an important question. And the answer is, we don't know. And that's not to say that it sounds noncommittal, but the reality is the market kind of dictates that. So, what we can control, and what we have built the foundation of the company on, is building something that's, we like institutional quality. So, that's when I talk about longevity, are, we look at all of these through, what if we had to sell it, you know, what if something happened, to what if we owned this for 40 years? And if we don't like it on both of those metrics, then that doesn't pass mustard with us. And to that end, the what if we have to sell it, crazier things have happened, we have to make sure that it's frankly for our own interests, for our own, boil it down, and you don't, you know, walk across the street, get hit by a bus, and, you know, this goes to somebody else in my company, we have to build it to a quality that's acceptable to those teacher pension funds, or, you know, endowments for colleges. It has to be that Class A investment tranche.
One last question I have that's related to that, and then I'll see what other council members have questions about. In developing the UDO, which I think you reviewed, in developing the Unified Development Ordinance that the council unanimously adopted last year, there are a good many design standards in there. And the goal with design standards is to obviously ensure high quality, some of the things that you're just speaking to. Could you address the design standard and the build quality of the actual apartment buildings? The three-dimensional aspect of it as opposed to just the two-dimensional?
Yeah. So, I actually have a handout, I have an older rendering, I'm happy to show it to you, but this is based on neighborhood feedback.
You can approach and pass it.
Yeah. Okay, so what you're looking at is, in terms of architectural standards, I've mentioned no vinyl siding. So, this is a mixture of that, where you see those vertical lines, that's bored and battered, so bored and battered, cementitious material. So, you know, that's the kind of stuff that you'd put on your house, right? The 30-year warranty, 40-year warranty. And so, and then we've worked in some accent brick as well. So, the way that not just, well, your UDO addresses it, is it requires that we, that we don't do vinyl siding. We wouldn't do it anyway, because it's gross. And it doesn't hold up. So, even though it looks like, just like if you were building a brand-new house, even though it kind of looks like something that is cladded wood, you're basically looking at a wood structure underneath, wood frame, that is completely clad and cementitious or brick siding. So, any other specifics I'm happy to address?
See what questions council has.
I have a few.
Yes, sir.
All right. My first question is, I want you to clarify about the intersection there. Hold it up. The main intersection where you got your median home, you're, yeah, right there, are they going to be able to cross the five lanes of traffic up there? You turn left and go towards La Grange?
I get what you're saying, is it a right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm...
It is.
My background is a state trooper, and I'm just saying, I know the traffic on this road right here.
Yes, sir.
You're going to have the public's traffic coming out of there, and then now you're going to add these cars here coming out of there. Are they going to be able to turn a left across five lanes of traffic? It's what I want to do.
That is what is permitted with the shopping center adjacent. So, we're not proposing to change that. It is a full-service intersection. Now, whether or not that intersection is stopped, or whether there's an additional left turn lane added so that there's queuing behind the right turners, or the people going straight, you know, that's yet to be determined.
There's been no proposal to do a right in, right out, and have a flip-around lane at the red light?
No, sir, not that I know about.
You understand what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir, I sure do. I sure do.
At hills and dales?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And ultimately where we are, thank you for your services, but ultimately where we are is, as Chris said, we provide GDOT with that study, and then they opine on it, and they make recommendations. So, the study studies the level of service that's already on the road, what impact, if any, of that level of service there is, and then makes recommendations. GDOT then has to agree with those recommendations.
Yep.
So, it's hard to give you 100% clarity.
That's correct, there's no media.
Yes, sir.
Here's my question. Next one, have you all approached the public shopping center about being able to go through and come out on hills and dales so that you're not coming out on that?
So, yes. Well, we've been talking with Merg through the whole process, and what was very important to them, and what they do, is that this is a resident-only gate, essentially, to leave. So, we did, but when you think about, you know, Publix, a Publix parking lot, it's, Publix doesn't like people cutting through, right?
So, there's no room for you to put a back access road to get to Hillsdale? I guess that's...
As kind of a secondary option.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
We actually have a topographic issue there, too. We cannot get the cars up the hill there.
Since you brought that up, that leads into my next question, is, are these apartments on the front, the three on the front and the clubhouse, are they going to be visible from the road when you drive east on Vernon?
Do we have the ability to pull up the picture?
So, yeah, it may take a moment to do.
That's fine. If you want, Andrew will work with her.
We have a pending ring, it's actually...
Yeah, we were thinking about that. The road does go, there's a slope that goes up, and then it'll actually go down before you get to where the, and then there's a parking lot before you get to the...
So, you won't be able to see?
It'll be 200 feet from the road. I think when you see this two-scale actual cross-section, you'll see that it would be, it's a reach to see it.
Okay. And, you can go ahead and answer my last question a while ago, right now. What's the rent prices on the low end and high end?
Yeah, so ultimately, market dictates. But where we've, where the one bedrooms start, you're looking at 1,200, 1,250, and then kind of going up from there. And then where do the two bedrooms start?
What presently, what would it be on a, was it three bedrooms the biggest?
They said no three bedrooms.
No three bedrooms, it's strictly 50% one.
You don't know what the market rate kind of is right now on a two-bedroom?
Yeah, no, we do. And so, like, recent development down the street at 11th, so, two-bedroom there, they're anywhere, you know, they're up to a $2,000 rental rate. So, what I will say is, rental rates have been climbing, climbing, climbing. And we want it to be accessible, but I also don't want that to be conflated with the quality of the people that are in here. These are people that have to be fully vetted, background-checked. It's harder to rent our apartments than it is to rent just another thing else.
Or buy a house?
If you're criminal.
So, this elevation that you see is looking toward that entrance that you were asking about. And as you can see, there are buildings back there, but the fence that repeats, that is consistent with the shopping center, is going to continue to repeat, which kind of gives us that same feel as if we're part of a master development. And then, but it's up, way up, that's where the right-of-way is, actually.
Right.
So, the GDOT right-of-way is 60, 70 feet from the road. And then you have, we'll be planting trees in a landscape strip that's required, and then there will be a parking lot, then there will be a building. So, that first building is what you kind of see back there behind the trees.
So, to answer my question, it's going to be fenced all along Vernon and to the gate?
Actually, those don't, they don't connect except with a hedge. There's a, and it's exactly like the Publix.
I was concerned about people walking across the road and not going to this crosswalk. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There will be a sidewalk on Vernon, and there will be a crosswalk. And there will be a sidewalk at that back entrance, which would be what people will actually use. They'll actually use that back sidewalk when they go to the grocery store, and then they'll come back. So, they'll never really get out on Vernon. But the folks who decide to walk and grab their groceries or get their evening walk, will not, will never get out toward Vernon, they'll be back. They'll be back at the interconnection with the shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Council, yes?
So, I don't see any utility poles, so I'm imagining this is all underground utilities. When the DOT, when you spoke with the DOT, was there any talk of them perhaps getting rid of more than just in front of your subdivision utility poles on that road? Because I know you said something about them widening.
Well, just to clarify, those would be our utility poles. I'm just saying, I mean, the utility poles are owned by the city.
We're going to have to go overhead, and there's some standing costs going underground right now, and based on our finances, we have elected to go overhead.
Inside the property will be underground?
Right.
Okay. But, so everything inside the property would be underground and would be buried. What is out on the GDOT right-ofway will probably remain until they widen, and if they widen, then it'll remain as overhead poles.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we actually require new subdivisions and new developments, whether it's multifamily or single-family, we require them to be underground inside the development, whether it's single-family.
100.
I have one other question. All right, so you said that the entrance between Publix, the new shopping center, whatever it's going to be called, the new shopping center and the subdivision, that gate is going to be exit-only, is that correct? So you can't go in there?
It'll be resident-only. So you will have to be, you will have to be a access card holding.
So, in other words, traffic's going to flow into that residence both ways?
Yes, both ways. That's correct.
And then the secondary one is dual access as well?
Yes. Yeah, it's all access control. The only difference between the two is you can pull in here when you're not a resident yet, and there's a handful of parking lot right there.
At the leasing office.
Yeah.
Okay, so the leasing office is going to be?
And that's over here.
That'll be outside the gates?
On the northern side.
So thoughtfully, we put the retail, you know, essentially our retail, right?
Right.
We're renting apartments on this side, and made this the primary entrance to decrease the intensity of that. That was thoughtfully done on our part. At one point, I think it actually was over there, and we flipped it over.
And just for the record, I have bond siding on my house.
I didn't mean to offend you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offend you. I have wood siding on mine house, it's driving.
You did note that prohibited in the UDO.
I know. The other question that I have in regards to your development is, you said you got one and two, no threes, no playground, and rent is starting at 1,200 and north of that. So we're not talking about Section 8, we're not talking about subsidized housing, right? We're talking about top-of-the-line, top-shelf housing, right?
Thank you for your question. Absolutely not. This is conventionally financed, has no government programs, no rent restrictions. This is, we have no, we can't lease these apartments unless they're as nice as what's recently been built just down the road, and our goal is to even go above and beyond that. But what I want, but what we've been focusing on, I mentioned, you know, we've done high-rises together, we've done all kinds of stuff in terms of varying densities. We developed this program, this has not been our focus up until about three years ago in the southeast, doing lower-density stuff, sprawling out a little bit. Very much been kind of an in-town developer in this area. We developed this because, as an answer to how do you make something attainable, as in not a high-rise, you know, the sky's the limit, but also not have to go and put it under Section 8 and/or, you know, do that unconventional kind of financing. And as an example, I mean, we're finishing up a project that's up in Jefferson, Georgia, by 85, and, you know, our one-bedrooms are already starting to lease in the 1300s, mid-1300s. So I just, the only reason why I'm conservative on that is just to say, look, we're going to kind of let the market dictate that.
The market is the market. I mean.
Yes, sir. But what we don't fold on is qualifications, in terms of income qualifications, you know, background checks, all that stuff. That's not, that's not market negotiable.
Any other questions? I failed to note for the record, Ms. Kelsey, if you will note for the record, that Councilman Arrington has recused himself from the consideration and the discussion, so I just want, I meant to make a note of that for the record. Any other questions from the council? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody else in council chambers who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Topman, if you'll come to the podium and identify yourself, make your comments.
Mr. Merrick, good morning, good afternoon. I apologize, I did get caught in traffic coming down from Atlanta. We are in favor of it.
Just for the record, your name and your?
My name is Merg Robert Hoffman. I go by Merg, Merg Hoffman. We are the developers of the Public Xander Shopping Center, and we are in favor of it. We've worked very closely with these gentlemen on the aesthetics, the fence, the making it look like a master-planned community, the restricted access, we don't want the cut-throughs either. We think the traffic issue will be nominal, because most people will be going at the other entrance, other than if they're going to buy groceries and then going home. We're coming from, most people from a grocery-buying standpoint, go home first and then come back and buy their weekly groceries, unless they're just stopping to buy milk and whatever they need for the evening. So most people do that from home, so that won't be adding any additional traffic at that intersection. So for the record, we are for it. They've worked very closely on the aesthetics and the appearance. Our shopping center, which I probably should have brought it, but we've designed ours to look like the assisted living, have some of the same elements and some of the same elements as Buckeye Creek, and they are doing some of the same elements as well. So our goal together is to make this look like a master-planned community that has several different product types.
Question about, thank you, Mr. Topman, for being here, and I'm glad your development is moving forward. Question about the shared entrance that we had some discussion about. It sounded like, if I heard the applicant's correct, it sounded like you've already received your DOT permit for that?
Yes, sir.
For that entrance?
We have, yes, sir.
And so if this apartment development goes in beside it, will anything, will anything change about the entranceway?
I don't believe so. The traffic from the multifamily is nominal compared to a grocery store into a...
What is the average traffic count for a grocery store development? I think you've got three out parcels in a grocery store. Do you have a?
I don't, but I promised Mark I would send him the study today, it didn't, but I will send him that study. But we fall well within those qualifications.
Right. And so the DOT permit, to Councilman Mitchell's question, that you've received is in and out, both left and right, and doesn't have a divided median?
There is a divided median out there today, but it will be full access and...
And not signaled?
And not signaled, yes, sir. And they won the signalized remain, obviously, at Vernon Woods, or Hills and Dales Farm at this point.
So let's clarify this, because at the entrance, where y'all have the median, that's right there, a car will be able to come down that hill, stop, and then turn left and go toward LaGrange.
Come down the hill and turn left towards LaGrange?
Come out of your shopping center.
Exiting the plaza, going north on Vernon.
And then, no, it won't be north, it'll be east.
Yes, sir.
But they'll be able to turn east across all lanes of traffic?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Two lanes, plus a...
It's not, it's four lanes there.
Well, it's two lanes, so you get the two going the other direction.
That's where it all merges in.
Yes, sir. And there'll be an extended diesel lane going into our property coming from east to west.
And just to clarify, that's been permitted already, so whether the apartments go or don't go, nothing's going to change on that. That's already been permitted.
I understand it, yes. And it's permitted out there at Chick-fil-A?
I'm not arguing the point, I'm just, I just wanted to clarify from the record.
I just kept surprised that Publix is not more concerned about that, because, I mean, my mom's 80 years old and shops at Publix, and I wouldn't want her turning left out of there.
Well, and everyone can go to Hills and Dales Farm Road, or they can come out and go right and go back. There will be two entrances to the shopping center. One, the entrance that we're talking about, then there'll be a right-in, right-out at the far-left side of Publix before the last out parcel. But yes, sir. Many it is permitted.
There'll be a way to get out through the red light.
Yes, there will be a way out through that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Topman. Any other questions? Okay?
No, well, I have a question for the city manager, not you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Did we invite the DOT to this meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Because I'm just noticing that there's a lot of questions about traffic, and I'd like, I think for our benefit, we need to know what they know, how they feel, you know. But I think the DOT is equally as important, if not more so, than the residents in this room as to how they feel about the growth and development in this community. And, you know, speaking as a former DOT employee, speaking as a former DOT employee, I would like to know where they stand with this.
Well, what I'll do is I'll ask the city manager, if she will, make a formal request to the district office in Thomasville, do they have anything they would like to share with the staff, and that can be reported at the next work session.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else in council chambers who wants to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Okay? Now I would like to ask, is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak against this rezoning request? If you will, one at a time, come to the podium and identify yourself for the record, and share any comments you have with the council.
First of all, thanks so much for giving us time to speak today. My name's David Sample. I live at, with my partner, Craig Hawkins, in the Ely Callaway Hudson House at 1201 Vernon Street. So we moved here in November of 2020, we bought the house in August of 2020. We came to LaGrange for the beautiful home, but little did we know, we're going to be moving into a neighborhood of incredibly caring people, beautiful cultural amenities, and a legacy of incredible historical architecture. I'm really just here to introduce our speakers. I, along with many here tonight, represent the Vernon and Broad Street Historic Districts, as well as the Buckeye Creek Community. We want to take this opportunity to express our concerns regarding the proposed rezoning and the multifamily development presented recently for 1,400 Vernon. Tonight, our speakers will present their thoughts and the risks that we believe this development presents to public safety, traffic, and the neighborhoods and quality of life in the historic districts adjacent to 1,400 Vernon Street. We have multiple speakers. My job is to introduce Laura Daniel. Laura Daniel is a neighbor, she is a registered architect. Laura will review how we believe this development does not meet the eight standards of consideration consistent with Section 25B 554 of the UDO. Following Laura, Janice Ingram, and Ken Birch will speak, and then I know we have other speakers who will also be standing up in support of us. Thanks so much.
Even though you've been introduced, if I can, when you come forward, if you'll reintroduce yourself for the record and make your comments.
Hi, council members. My name is Laura Daniel. I am a new resident to Vernon Street as well. We just moved in in July. We live just a couple houses down from that abandoned Vernon Road connector. So I know that we sent out some information to all of you this, yesterday, so I wanted to pass out hard copies if you would like to refer.
Please, yes, if you'll approach and, and the council, and you can bypass Councilman Arrington if you'd like, since we have an extra, you can, yeah. I like reading.
We'll share.
Here we have it.
It counted. I'm sorry.
Jim's got to go pizz.
Maybe I was counting for...
Actually, I got a copy of the...
Okay.
Oh, thank you. So my intent is really just to go through more of the fact-based zoning and development code reviews that was done relative to this rezoning request, unless about the alliance proposal itself. So I wanted to walk through the eight points, I'll try to make it as brief as possible. The first point being whether the proposed rezoning would permit a use that is suitable in the view of use and development of adjacent and nearby properties. So...
You can go up here.
I just talked really quiet, oh, I could take my mask off.
If you might take the mask off.
Okay, is this better? Okay. So the proposal to rezone the property to a CR zoning district is, would satisfy two needs from the LaGrange Comprehensive Plan on a surface level, and that is to provide a more affordable housing and to develop the gateway corridor down Vernon Street. But in doing so, you're also negating and neglecting the needs and developments that are listed in the traditional neighborhood, the stable traditional neighborhoods' needs and opportunities. In the Comprehensive Plan, you state that you'd like to promote the conformity to the traditional neighborhood development principles, and there are only two traditional neighborhoods listed in the Comprehensive Plan, that being the Vernon Road Historic District and the Broad Street Historic District. And in order to promote the conformity to those development principles, I assume that you're referring to the traditional neighborhood districts that were developed in your zoning ordinance in the UDO, and those districts have more strict requirements to help promote a transitional point from a single-family subdivision to a more high-density mixed-use area. And in the past, you've used these principles to buffer neighborhoods such as Piney Woods, Ridgecrest, the Flower Streets from the new developments in downtown. So if you look at the zoning map, you can see how you've filtered the single-family housing through, you use a bunch of TN districts, and then it's the CR districts that are downtown. So when we're looking at the Vernon Road Historic District, if you don't provide any buffer between us and a CR district, then you're not really promoting or enforcing any of the development standards that those types of traditional neighborhood districts were meant to help. There are plenty of CR districts to the west side of this parcel that could be available for development. And so just choosing to rezone this parcel because there's a project at hand is a little bit of putting the cart before the horse, where we haven't been able to look at the big picture of what opportunities and options you have in developing that parcel to create more of a node or a transitional point to our Historic District, and to promote, you know, a separation point from a single-family housing to these mixed-used, high-density Item number two, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties. As mentioned in item one, the proposed rezoning would adversely affect the existing use of the single-family properties immediately to the, hey, immediately to the east of the proposed 22-acre land parcel. It would affect those properties in the following ways. Item A, similar to what I just spoke about, the non-alignment with the TN districts, not considering or withholding the historic value of these homes and the corridor that currently provide to the city of LaGrange. Homeowners have invested and maintained these properties at their own expense to preserve the history, significance, and the presence on this corridor. provide to the City of LaGrange. Homeowners have invested and maintained these properties at their own expense to preserve the history, significance, and the presence on this corridor. If the City of LaGrange does not also protect us and help us by preserving our area, then there would be less incentive for the homeowners of these properties to invest their own money to uphold these standards. Item B would be the increasing uncongested traffic on Vernon Street without an updated, accurate, third-party traffic study. I tried to see if there was a public released traffic study done on Vernon Street to try to look at what, to gauge how, on paper, what the traffic on Vernon Street is like. I, as a resident, have my own opinions of what that experience is like, and I'll leave that to the other members of our party to speak about. But, I did find a 2006 traffic study that was promoted for the Troup County, and in that transportation plan, they list all the roads in Troup County, but if you specifically look at the Western Corridor, the Vernon Street Corridor was rated LOSF, which is on an A-to-F scale. It's the only corridor in the City of LaGrange listed as F, and that was in 2006. So, no improvements have been made to Vernon Street yet. We have approved a shopping center, which is great, but adding the shopping center and apartments without having done research on how we're going to fix the problem before it happens seems to be a little short-sighted. The increased traffic would not only be a burden to the neighbors, but also a potential public safety hazard as we use this corridor as the primary entrance to the hospital. My office faces Vernon Street, I see all day, every day, all of the cars have to pull over into the shoulder of the road to make room for the ambulances. If that road gets more congested and more chaotic, they were only postponing the travel time for ambulances and the general public's access to the hospital, which could potentially be a safety hazard. Item three, whether the property could be affected, to be affected by the proposed rezoning has reasonable economic use as currently zoned. Your UDO doesn't offer a definition for reasonable economic use, so I'm going to make some assumptions about what you mean on that. The parcel's currently zoned as USD, and that is, does, it does not provide a reasonable economic use, as Alliance said earlier. It has very steep topography grades and would be pretty challenging for someone to develop as a single-family residence or in keeping with the USD district. However, I would challenge the city council to consider all opportunities and other zoning options and what could be placed in that parcel that would have long-term and short-term benefits and establish, help establish and uphold the character of LaGrange. Item four, whether the proposed rezoning would result in a use that would cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, including volume and nature of resulting traffic changes, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. Back to the 2006 traffic study, that this corridor is already listed as one of the least successful corridors in Vernon Street, I would feel compelled to ask the City of LaGrange to conduct their own third-party traffic study, unaffiliated with any biased party. That would help lend a hand to understanding what your master plan is for the Western Corridor. If the intent for that is to develop a lot of mixed-use or higher-density housing, then I would think that the City of LaGrange would benefit by knowing what those maximum capacities would be and what they should do to address the connection, provide more connections to that area that is not through the Vernon Street Corridor, and to also explore other solutions before allowing the developments to happen. We have a lot of points listed under traffic. I would request that you review the traffic study, and these details that we've pulled out for you are pretty lengthy for me to go in subject by subject. Point five, whether the proposed rezoning conforms with the policies and intents of the Comprehensive Plan. As I said before, the proposed rezoning of this property would satisfy two needs from the Comprehensive Plan on a surface level, and that would be to develop the gateway corridor and to provide affordable housing. However, it does not conform to the needs and developments of traditional neighborhoods, and it only exacerbates the traffic congestion on Vernon Street. So, I would, I would like to, it is the, I would like to ask the council to consider other options that would benefit all four of those categories and have long-term and short-term benefits, instead of challenging 50% of them. Item six, whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property that give supporting grounds to either the approval or disapproval of the proposed zoning. We know that the Public Shopping Center is coming, and understanding the implications of what that development means in terms of traffic scale, scope, and public safety would be critical before deciding to add 320 apartments adjacent to this parcel. Item number seven, whether to the extent which the proposed amendment results in significant adverse impacts on the natural environment. Full design documents were not provided, so you cannot create an analysis on the public welfare based on the design of the property. Most of the time, this subject means that we're looking at the height and the relation, the distance from these buildings to the adjacent parcels and elevation to address the light, air, and scale impacts that this development would have on adjacent properties. And that information is not provided, so I cannot comment on number seven. Number eight is the feasibility of serving the property with water, public water and sewer service and the impacts of such on the city's infrastructure. I would like to ask the city council if the City of LaGrange has provided, has done a sewer capacity analysis on how the existing sewer systems will serve these parcels as they get developed into higher-density and more complex services and in tune, also with the traffic study. These are two, I've worked in several jurisdictions that I've watched cities get backed into a corner where they allow a lot of developments, and then they're trying to do all the infrastructure on the back end, and even if you're able to make those upgrades after the developments are built, then it's way more of a headache, and you have to do road construction after your Publix is built and after the apartments are built. And having that forethought before you start rezoning properties is essential in creating a successful transition that your residents support. I think that the city council will benefit from creating a master plan, like I said before, of what you expect the Western Corridor to be, and then being able to approve developments based on your master plan, instead of making the decision to rezone parcels before we see the big picture and what we can support. Next is going to be Janice Ingram. She's a longtime resident of the LaGrange, of the Vernon Street, and she'll be up.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
I'm Janice Ingram, and as Laura said, I have lived here since 1984. We moved here, my children and I got here in November, and in December, we were at a city council meeting regarding Vernon Street. So, it's a long-term issue that, as Laura said, really needs addressing before we look at increasing development. I think the bottom line that we really want to look at here is giving you a reason to say no to putting multifamily units in. The thing that I would ask you to look back to is the comprehensive study that was done, and the responses totally were in favor of single-family homes detached, single-level, and farther on down the graph, next to last, were multifamily apartment units. So, you know, I think if you ask your residents what they want, then hopefully, we can follow through with what our residents want. Traffic has been mentioned time and again, and anyone that certainly lives on Vernon or has ever had to deal with Vernon can appreciate that. The question that I have asked anybody in here that knows Vernon Street, would you want more traffic on Vernon? I don't think anyone that is a resident of this community says yes. You know, we now even have a back way out of our property so that we can avoid trying to be on Vernon as much as possible. Laura addressed the safety issue, which is truly a problem as well, and I think she's right in looking at a traffic study. And if I'm understanding correctly, this is where the curb cut already exists, and this would be a new entrance or exit out onto Vernon in addition to the Hills and Dales?
That's correct.
When I was understanding that, it just, it really...
But just to clarify, that's going to happen regardless of whether the apartments happen or not. That's already been approved for the Publix development. So, if the applicant for the apartments withdrew their application and said, "We have no interest in building here,"
That's still coming.
That's still coming, because that's been approved for the Publix. I just don't want there to be, I mean, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about that.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. The thing that I would also want to point out is, the two speakers that you've heard from our community so far, David Sample moved here from Atlanta, Laura Chaney Daniel, or Laura and Chaney Daniel have family ties here. Chaney has chosen to move back to LaGrange, and, you know, for a young couple to want to come back to LaGrange and rear their family here, their children here, speaks volumes of this community. And, we have other residents that are here in the room that have moved here from Atlanta. One that is not here tonight, that is also, they have bought a house on Vernon and are moving here from Woodstock. So, it's really, we're encouraging people to move here from out of town that are investing in the historic area, and I'm certain they would like to feel like the City of LaGrange supports their efforts in maintaining these older houses, because we certainly know they fall into disrepair quickly. And, it's not inexpensive to, for any of us to keep up our homes. So, to try to do that to an old home that you have to go in and really backtrack when so much has to be customized is really an issue. So, you know, I certainly appreciate them being willing to take on that challenge, and I would like for us to encourage them in that effort and to possibly encourage others to come here. One of the main things that I really, I would like to say is that this is an amazing community. You know, I know all of you, and I've taught some of your children, but it's wonderful here. We chose to come here, never having even heard of LaGrange, Georgia, did comparison with a community in Alabama and said, "Okay, what are the important things that we really want in a community?" And, LaGrange lost. And Dick and I looked at each other and we said, "But, we want to go to LaGrange." And we have never regretted it, never, because of the compassionate and caring influence of this community and working together. And I think I can speak for all of the Vernon residents, that we want to work with the city, we want to work with the city council, regardless of how all of this goes, that's the only way we become a better and stronger community. We're all in this together, and so, when we work together to make it better, it will be better. So, just know that, you know, we support you as our elected officials, and help us understand and help us go, move forward in this. But, currently, we ask that you deny the multifamily rezoning for all of the reasons that have been specified, and we hope that, maybe not so much me, but some of the others that are more data-driven, have been able to give you data that validates a reason to deny the request.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Kim, if you'd come forward and identify yourself for the record as well.
I'm the Councilman, Mr. Mayor. I'm Kim Birch. Thank you all for having me. I come in opposition of this development, and I have many, many concerns, and even more after hearing the developer speak. Some of the things that are alarming to me is I don't feel like they're investing in our community. They're coming in, they're doing a build that's going to make themselves some money. They've already told us as a neighborhood that their plan is to come in, build, and sell in three to seven years. When they were asked that question by you all, they said, "We don't know." That was very alarming to me. Secondly, I don't believe that they're familiar enough with our community to know what we demand, the quality that we demand, the forethought that we have when we build communities or begin projects. Mr. Mitchell asked about the traffic. So, I live on Vernon Street, I live at 1401, right across from Farrell Drive, very close to where this proposal is slated to be. I left my house seven times yesterday. That's just exiting seven times, then entering again seven times, and that was not a busy day for me. That was just an average day for me. So, you see the amount of traffic that I myself put on Vernon Street daily. Now, let's add public shoppers at Publix. Now, let's add residents of this new apartment complex. Ms. Daniel talked about the traffic that it's going to add and could be a life-threatening situation for those getting to and from the hospital. That's a great concern. Now, as far as apartment goes, apartment living goes, not every apartment complex here is full. There are opportunities for residents to come in and live in these currently-built apartment buildings and complexes. And just to elaborate on what the builder said, anytime a rental property is rented to a new renter, there's always a background check done, there's always a credit check done. I work in the real estate industry, I work with property management, so that's not a niche that they're tapping into. Every, everyone does that. Now, let me speak from my personal experience. As a Realtor, I work a lot of times with relocation companies. They're bringing executives to our community. It's my job to tour them around, find them a home, and give them the opportunity to not only work in our community, but live and invest and grow our community. Within the first 30 minutes, they're always asking about Noonan, Peachtree City, Auburn, Opelika, and Columbus. And I ask, "No, you're here in LaGrange. You've decided to work for ABC Company in LaGrange. Why are you asking about these other communities?" Well, we hear that their school systems are wonderful, and we hear that they are so unique because they have all these restaurants and all these shopping opportunities and all this. So, I have to work very hard to show them how special we are. Well, let me tell you what we have for the arts. Let me tell you what we have for our community as far as education goes and extracurricular, and let me tell you how involved our council people are in growing our community in a positive light. We're more interested in quality over quantity. So, where we might not have a target, we have a community that's going to invest in you. We have great opportunity for you and your children to live and work. And I think that it's very important that we show these people coming to town how we're different. With that being said, we don't want something that any other community has. Any other community can have an apartment complex with one to two-bedroom units. We don't want that. We want to be different and better. We want to be the community that other chambers come to and tour because we're the model. Do you see this small historic community that was originally a mill town? Do you see how they've... Do you see how they've grown? Do you see how they've taken all of these opportunities and capitalized and they're now a progressive community? That's how we want others to see us. Not as the community who has one more run-of-the-mill apartment complex, one more run-of-the-mill quickie in-and-out shopping center. We want to be different. We want to be better. And I don't know that this particular opportunity gives us that. I know that they've already asked for several variances in building codes. That's also a concern to me. I would think it would be a concern to you because I look at all of you, and I know you personally, and I know that you all do not settle for anything less than the best. So keep that in mind. You've heard all the data. You know the statistics. Hear what I am saying the newcomers' perception is of us. They think we're just run-of-the-mill. It's not until they get here and I show them differently that they realize, huh, they have just as great opportunities here in LaGrange as they do in these bigger cities. So let's continue to grow and be progressive in the ways that mimic our community and capitalize on what we and you all have already done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kim. Does anyone else want to speak in opposition? Mitch, if you'll do the same as...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. My name's Mitch Cummings, and I'm here on behalf of the Buckeye Creek Homeowners Association. Tonight is the third time in 24 months that our homeowners association has come to council to voice our thoughts and concerns for proposed zoning changes near our homes. We do appreciate the opportunity of having our voices heard. The first time here, we listened to and ultimately supported rezoning that would allow the Heritage Hills, or Heritage Senior Living Center be built. It was approved by council, and it has been built on the Hills and Dales Road. The second time here, we listened to and ultimately supported rezoning that would allow a grocery-anchored shopping center. It was approved by council and has been built, and according to developer, they are to begin construction within the coming weeks. Tonight, we're here again to listen to a proposed zoning change that would allow multifamily apartments to be built in or near the downtown and historic areas of our city. Tonight, the Buckeye Creek Association is here to oppose this rezoning request, not because it's not good for our, just our small community, but is not good for the citizens that are part of or near the downtown and historic areas of LaGrange. Most of us moved in town to be part of a close community committed to keeping this area of LaGrange as it was originally designed, which is in-town, single-family homesite living. We recognize that LaGrange is changing, and we have and will continue to support any changes that are best suited to most of our citizens. However, a large-scale, 300-plus unit apartment complex within blocks of our famous square is not in anyone's best interest except the developer who wishes to build it. Our concern is not just the additional traffic clogs or noise factors that will increase in that area of town should the multifamily zoning request be granted, however, those are legitimate concerns we do have. Our real concern is that the apartment complex not only changes the feel of our residential community, but an apartment complex will have an adverse effect on the property values of our single-family homes. We chose our homes because they were close to the city center, downtown and historic areas, to churches for shopping convenience, the Sweetland venue. We did not choose to live near an apartment complex. There are many apartment tracts of land that have recently been built or currently under construction that are better suited for multifamily living. We would encourage the developer to seek other properties better suited for an apartment complex outside the square and/or the downtown or historic areas for those needs. In closing, we could support additional single-family sites to be developed in an area that would meet green space and in-town development requirements. However, we would strongly oppose any rezoning that included multifamily apartment complex. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on behalf of the Buckeye Creek Homeowners Association, we appreciate your careful consideration, and we respectfully request that the council vote no on any multifamily apartment zoning changes that are at or near the downtown or historic areas of our great city. Thank you for your continued service and leadership.
Thank you, Mitch.
Shall I say for record, or is that good?
No, you're good. You're good. We're on camera and so forth, yeah. Does anybody else want to speak against this rezoning request? Okay, I will declare that public hearing closed, and just for the benefit of those who are interested in this, we will have a first reading of this ordinance tonight. At first reading, the council takes no action, and then there will be a second reading on our council meeting at 5:30 on February 22nd, and at that time, the ordinance will be ripe for action by the council. We'll move on to delegations. I have Lauren Ferris, an intern with the GIS and Economic Development. Adam, are you going to present her?
Yeah. Introduce her. Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Adam Spies, work with the LaGrange Youth Council and internship programs. As you know, the difficult selection process on our youth council sometimes leads other students without the opportunity to join us, and we always present them with an opportunity for an internship. Miss young Lauren Ferris over there was one of them who leapt at the opportunity to jump in our internships, and she particularly was interested in GIS mapping and economic development. I can tell you from emailing with her and talking to her, she is passionate, she is dedicated, and she is persistent. So to tell you a little bit about what she learned, Ms. Lauren Ferris.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Ferris, and I'm a senior at LaGrange High School with a passion for learning and serving others. Local government has always been of interest to me, and I'm very grateful to Mr. Adam Spies and the city of LaGrange for allowing me to participate in such an enriching opportunity. I have recently completed an eight-week internship in both the GIS mapping department and the economic development department, and I'm honored to be here tonight to speak to you about what I've learned. Through my time spent with Mr. Rhodes and Ms. Spencer in the GIS mapping department, I learned exactly how GIS mapping works, how to make, analyze, and revise a map, and how much GIS benefits our city. This technology has completely changed the functionality of the utility services that the city provides. I learned that not only does GIS deal with mapping utilities, but it can also be used to track COVID cases, create zoning districts for the fire and police departments, and it can also be used by many other departments in the city of LaGrange. In construction work, GIS shows where sewer, electric, and gas lines are, notifying workers where they can and cannot build, enabling them to fix utility problems much faster and creating a safer environment for workers. Mr. Rhodes and Ms. Spencer also showed me how they regulate and analyze GIS data logged by the workroom members. I actually had the opportunity to do some field work around City Hall and make a connection between the GIS system and the actual areas themselves. I was able to experiment with adding things such as a fire hydrant and a water valve into the system to see firsthand how utilities work. Through using the GIS system, Mr. Rhodes also showed me how LaGrange has developed over time, spanning back all the way to 1980, and it was quite interesting to see, especially how much LaGrange High School has changed over all these years. Through my time with Mr. Malone and Ms. Bush in the economic development department, I developed a new appreciation and love for our little town. I truly had no idea about the multitude of manufacturing companies located here in LaGrange. It opened my eyes to aspects of our town that I had never really thought of before. I learned that economic development is not only about bringing in new businesses, but supporting existing businesses and promoting workforce development. When existing businesses are thriving, it reflects the success of our local economy. Mr. Malone and Ms. Bush gave me a great overview of specific programs that have been implemented to support the workforce here, such as the Troup County Career Center and strides that have been made to create more housing for workers. I found it very interesting how much economic development impacts other aspects of society such as education. It was fascinating to hear all of the steps involved in bringing in a new company to town and how various communities are in competition with each other to attract new businesses. I also had the opportunity to tour various industrial parks, which put everything that I had learned into perspective. I was able to see companies such as Duracell, Caterpillar, Kimberly-Clark, Interface, and more. Mr. Malone and Ms. Bush also dived into the history of our community and explained how we transitioned from a mill economy into an advanced manufacturing economy. I learned that every community has its weaknesses, but it's important to recognize, acknowledge, and understand those weaknesses in order to move forward and find solutions. This internship has changed my perspective on the world and different careers, but most of all, it's changed the way I view this wonderful city of ours. I've had such an amazing experience as an intern here for the city, and I am beyond grateful for this opportunity to learn and grow. I also want to thank Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Spencer, Mr. Malone, and Ms. Bush for graciously giving other time to spend with me each week. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, for your service to the city. We appreciate you, the work you've done, and appreciate you coming and sharing that with the council.
Can she do a traffic study?
I think there's nothing she can't do.
I was going to say, I think you got some speaking ability genes from somebody.
We will move on to reports. Do any council members have anything they would like to report tonight?
Yes, I'm Mr. Mayor. Just to shine some light and salute some African-Americans, since this is Black History Month, I'd like to salute some of the fine African-American men and women of LaGrange, Troup County, especially LaGrange. Dr. Benjamin Wood and Dr. Epps were some of our first African-American doctors here in the city of LaGrange. Some of our African-American nurses that were trailblazers at City County Hospital. The first African-American police and firefighters here in LaGrange. Also, John Moore was one of the first and only African-Americans that owned a drugstore downtown. All the fine military men and women that fought and protected this country during a time of segregation. I want to salute them. Also, Horace Ward, one of the first federal judges that was from LaGrange, Georgia. Teachers, Mrs. Ethel W. Kite, who consolidated a lot of the county schools here in Troup County. Horace King, a bridge builder from LaGrange, Georgia, and so many, many others. I just wanted to salute them tonight as we honor and recognize Black History Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Edmondson, and certainly, I think, council and I all join you in celebrating Black History Month. Appreciate you sharing some of those names with us, and I'm going to take this as your volunteering to perhaps record a video for Katie and Adam that we could put out in celebration.
Living history!
A living, I can't remember what we call it, the weekly broadcast, the weekly...
City Week?
Well, not City Week, but the weekly Stories of LaGrange.
Yes, the Stories.
One of those stories, I would love for you to, if you would consider that, but sooner rather than later, getting out some of those stories, because certainly, we want to share that with the entire community.
And that's coming from personal experience. That's an old guy.
29.
But thank you for, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I just...
I'm going to go down the list. Any other reports?
No.
I know you have something to report, Councilman Gaskin, but let me see if anybody else does.
Oh, yeah. I do have a report.
No reports. Councilman Gaskin?
Yeah, I just want to report that, you know, again, in honor of Black History, I'm going to take it on a more somber tone. Recently, there was some, it was a meeting about the Griggs Center, and I purposely skipped out on that, and for good reason. Number one, it's not under the city control. And historically, it has been a cornerstone for young folks in the African-American community, was built as a segregated recreation center, and it still serves the same community today. I just want to go on record and let everybody know that we have a lot of problems with the young people, whether they're not getting out enough and playing, or they're getting involved in bad things like gangs, and just being in the wrong place at the wrong time, not doing any constructive activities. I go to the Griggs Center every day, and I do mean every day. I take my mother-in-law over there to walk with the rest of the young ladies, and they have a great time fellowshipping with one another. But it's the absence of the young people because the amenities there are so poor. The building leaks everywhere like a sieve. There are pipes underneath that building, they have no idea where they're at. The building is more than 50 years old. It's never been slated for any deep reconstructive processes. And I know that there are a lot of people here that love this community, and I just want to make sure that you guys hear me and hear me well, coming from the other side of town. What the county is doing with that building is an absolute travesty. I know people want to keep it and preserve the historic value of it. Maybe they like the idea of segregation and they want to hold on to it, I understand that. But we are in a day and age where these young people need something that says, "We care about you, we want to invest in you," and there's no reason why we have to keep patching a 50-year-old building. Nothing says "I love you" more than putting a Band-Aid on a gushing wound. I am ashamed that that building even exists in the state that it's in now. And I know it's not under our control, and I am sad about that. I wish it was. But the whole purpose of the county keeping that building was to keep a portion of the splash money, and that splash money doggone it ain't going into that building. And I'm sick and tired of this. Our young people being bounced around like a friggin' paddleball. Put some money in my community. Put it in there. I'm tired of this. And I mean, no one else seems like it's, it's important. And I'm tired of seeing these young people get killed out here in the streets. I'm tired of them playing basketball, which, I mean, some of the games are good. I've played in a few of them, on the street, on a goal, on a side street. I mean, our communities deserve better than that, our young people deserve better than that, and that's my Black History moment. I'm pissed off, and I think it should be better than what it is. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilman Gaskin, for sharing that, and certainly, we are all, we all share your frustration with the slow progress on the Griggs Center renovation. We understand that the construction prices of everything is higher than expected, but hopefully, we'll get some movement out of the county. As you know, the city council already committed $1 million to go along with the county's $1 million, to go along with $2 million from the Callaway Foundation for that renovation project. Just a fair warning, you may be asked to commit more as a council. So I just, I'm just putting that out there, but fair warning...
I understand that.
Because the costs of construction have exceeded the county's anticipated budget. I've had that conversation with the county commission chairman, and as they continue to work through the planning and the construction documents, this will come back before us sooner rather than later.
And just as a side note, just one more thing. You know, there are a lot of people that aren't at the table. I mean, we put in money, but we're not in the discussions in depth. But we've got a school system that every single high school has a swim team, and they utilize the park and rec swimming area. We are not only being taxed to support a recreation pool for the community, but then the school board, who actually gets taxes, turns around and then monopolizes what is for the community for their own benefit. Then when you need a pool in the black area, the school system is nowhere to be found. That money should have been going to my community. This is fact, and I'm tired of people not holding your school board members responsible for robbing us. They are taking money from us, and half of them are up for reelection this year.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. City Manager Report, Ms. Kell... Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have the financial statements for January, as well as the payment of bills over $2,000 that are attached to your agenda materials. Not having particular comments at this time. Would be glad to answer any questions. Wouldn't know that we will be next month entering the budget season again. It comes up very quickly. But without any questions, if you have...
Any questions from the city manager about the financial report?
Beg, I think you do a great job with the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin.
Okay, Ms. Kelsey.
And finally, this morning at work session, Patrick bought forth an agreement with the Hurd County Water Authority where we supply about 8 to 10 customers water on the northwest side of town. This agreement basically just determines how we're going to do maintenance for that facility as it relates to meters. Apparently, Hurd County has a charge that they add on to our bill every month. They're willing to remove that charge in exchange for LaGrange responding with the maintenance needs for that. So staff would recommend that council approve that agreement.
Motion approving.
Have a motion second to approve the agreement. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. Anything else, Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. That completes our report.
Okay. We'll move on to resolutions. I have an intergovernmental contract regarding conveyance of industrial property adjacent to Upper Big Springs Road.
Mr. Todd's gonna give that report.
Mayor and council members, we've discussed this a number of times over the last year plus. What you have before you tonight is an intergovernmental contract between the city and the development authority, authorizing the city to convey 100-plus acres on Upper Big Springs Road to the development authority. And then they in turn will convey it to a hydroponic agricultural concern that hopes to get started in six or eight months.
Clarification. That's for produce, correct?
Leafy green.
Leafy green.
Leafy green.
No produce.
Vegetables, yeah.
Yes, that's what we...
All those developments.
Okay. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Some of them.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. We will move on to first readings of ordinances. I have an ordinance annexing property located on New Airport Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by Robert Campanelli and located on New Airport Road to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And I also have a first reading of an ordinance zoning property on New Airport Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real estate to be annexed into the city located on New Airport Road and owned by Robert Campanelli to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And then finally, I have a first reading of an ordinance rezoning property located in the 1400 block of Vernon Street.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Vernon Street and owned by Sanovus Trust Company, N.A., in its capacity as successor trustee of the trust created under the will of Fuller E. Callaway, Jr. for the benefit of Charles D. Hudson, Jr. at Owl and Sanovus Trust Company as successor trustee for Alice Hand Callaway at Owl under a trust agreement dated December 29, 1976, with Fuller E. Callaway, Jr. as settler, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Ms. Venshure, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir. The good news for tonight is that our youth council had an incredible event last night with the Boys and Girls Club of West Georgia. Every year, of course, our youth council, they adopt three projects for the year. This year, they've adopted their projects focusing on mental health, sustainability, and mentorship. And last night, the Mentorship Committee hosted a pizza and ice skating party at Sweetland Amphitheater. Each youth council member paired up with two Boys and Girls Club members. They spent time talking to them about themselves and then talking about getting involved in the youth council. And they served the youth group, the young group, with pizza, cookies, and they had such a great time. We are hoping to make this an annual event. It was really fantastic. And special thanks to the Boys and Girls Club Executive Director, Sabrina Allen, for helping make this happen. And a portion for Adam and Jeremy as well, our youth council advisors. So it was a really nice event, very successful last night.
Thank you all for putting that together. We stand adjourned.